Welcome each and every one of you to our 8:00 AM. Um, nice night time afternoon. Um, we have a, uh, broker office.
Ezra Thor here.
Steve Kaiten.
Here.
Jenny Doyle.
Here.
Kevin Houchens. Mike Houchens. Patricia Pine.
Here.
Great, thank you. Our financials, please.
Restraint transient room tax collections for March. Restraint tax forty thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars, seventeen cents. Transient room tax thirteen thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and eighteen cents. Transferred to tourism commission fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Cash analysis for March, investments eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Fire department checking thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Fire department savings one thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. Police department savings five thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Great, thank you. Um, we have Ms. Mary Adams from Brad with us, uh, this evening. We have several resolutions. We skipped minutes, okay? Moving right along, um, if you've had a chance to, uh, look at the, uh, minutes from last month, I will entertain a motion to, uh, approve this.
I make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion in second, any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Okay, uh, financials.
That goes quick.
Um, Ms. Mary Adams from, um, Brad is with us, uh, pertaining a CDVG grant. Go ahead, Mary.
Oh, so my name is Mary Adams, I work at the Brad office. Um, I'm helping the city apply for a CDVG grant, which is community development block grant, um, for, to renovate the Houchens building, be inside the Boys and Girls Club, the New Boys and Girls Club, right here in the city. Um, we all have several resolutions on the agenda, and others are saying that we have to pass orders to apply for this grant. And then, we will be holding a public hearing here, um, at City Mall next Monday night at six P M. Um, and that's also a requirement of the process, um, of the application process. And that's just to let the citizens of the city know that, um, that, you know, the city is working on this application. And, you know, they can get anything with that. So everybody would welcome to that as a sixth year the next Monday night.
Okay, Mary, thank you so much. And as you mentioned, we have several resolutions. Uh, it's a federal grant. And I will point out that, uh, yes, it is the Boys and Girls Club. They got, at least the building, or the CDVG has to run through their main municipality. So therefore, that's why we got to, uh, pass these resolutions. Mary, any questions for you? Thank you so much. If not, we will start on the reg- resolutions you have in your packet. Uh, Bobby, if you would, uh, put me on the stage.
Resolution twenty-two four eleven B, a resolution of, a resolution regarding, uh, community development block grant projects caused. Resolved by the city council, the cost overrun associated with this shall be, uh, reviewed by the city, uh, as they have been.
Uh, I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Make that motion.
We have a motion in second, any discretion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Resolution twenty-two four eleven C, which is the, uh, fair housing, uh, resolution filed that available resources will assist all persons who feel they have been discriminated against because of race, color, gender, sex, sexual orientation and so forth. Uh, the city publicizes this resolution and encourages owners of the real estate to become aware of the respective responsibility and the problem, and include animals in one while printing and publishing, publication, distribution of posters, flyers, and the private analysis of animals, the fair housing challenges.
Thank you, sir. Uh, motion to approve, uh, this resolution.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion in second, any discussion?
This is the one that goes along with the grant.
Yes, all of them, we're paying for this. Right. Yes. Any other questions?
No, Brad will provide, uh, that analysis of the bill.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion passes.
Resolution twenty-two oh four eleven D, true standing. Purchases for the renovation of the Boys and Girls Club will be reviewed by the city to, uh, ensure there's no duplication. That small purchases, uh, will be made to the lowest best price. There'll be competitive sale bids for the larger items, so they have to pay, uh, for a bidding. Uh, uh, so, in some cases, uh, competitive negotiation could always, uh, provide with the state procurement standard. Contracts excess five hundred dollars will be by written contract. Uh, locally owned minority owned female owned small businesses will be given appropriate weight for these firms, uh, when they bid. There'll be no conflict of interest reception, acceptance of any gratuity by any member of the city government.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion, uh, to approve this resolution. We have a motion in second, any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign. Thank you.
Number, the resolution twenty-two oh four eleven E, which is the, uh, anti-displacement and relocation assistance order of the resolution. This resolution provides that in the end, uh, a dislocation of any person as a result of the renovation of the building, that, uh, there will be, uh, rehabilitation relating to the conversion and, uh, make sure that, uh, the city will provide relocation assistance for anybody who is dislocated as a result of renovating the house.
Great, thank you. Uh, entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Make that motion.
We have a motion in second, any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign. Okay, uh.
That's all the one I have is that, the number that's in there, the one that, that was all was in my pack.
Um, are there any more, Mary?
There should be at least one more, uh, agenda.
Resolution for the city, thank city, uh, regarding city.
What about eleven A, eleven B? There wasn't eleven A in my pack. The B, we read B. Eleven A, which we, uh, we resolved with the city that they would survive for a community development block grant funds for seven hundred and fifty dollars obviously for the renovation of the Boys and Girls Club building. The mayor's authorized signed the grant application, the necessary documents. And the mayor of our area, the Development District, which is Brad, is authorized to prepare the application and assist in the administration of the project.
Thank, thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution. Motion in second, any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Uh, did we do twenty-two four eleven C?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
We did, that was the first.
Okay.
There we go.
And this is just the process with, uh, uh, hopefully to get seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to renovate that building. And, uh, all the negotiations, um, yes, you know, it's a very worthy project. That said, uh, as you all said, and Mary, thank you so much. I know she's done a lot of work on, on this, so we appreciate it. Okay, um, you finished. Uh, and, and you'll say it's just listed as Zoom on your agenda. Um, we have had, uh, people that has expressed an interest in, uh, Zoom came about during, um, COVID. Didn't hear much about it until then. We actually began and set up and started doing it in December of two thousand twenty. Um, and it was, uh, very useful. Uh, and, um, we, we had some, uh, situations where it was, uh, necessary, about the sickness and no fight. Um, since things have been relaxed somewhat, um, you know, and, and I've had different folks express to me, uh, you know, when we really need to do it, when we not need to do it, and those types of things. So basically, we have put it on the agenda. We did go back and move, dinner for nine, back, uh, the council did pass, uh, it was either November or December.
November twenty nineteen.
Uh, to, uh, go forward with providing and making, and with the necessary equipment of, uh, the, uh, so we could do that during, during the crisis, during COVID, and those types of things. So, and it was passed by the council to do that. And with the comments I've had, and, and expressions, both for and against. So, uh, since the council voted to do it, I'm just going to put it on the agenda and leave it up to you. So that's where we're at right now.
So we need to make a motion to discuss, correct?
Excuse me?
We need to make a motion to discuss, correct?
Uh, yes, we need a motion in some form or fashion, then we, uh, and then, then we open for discussion.
Okay, I make that motion.
Motion to.
Discuss. Whatever I need to do.
No, we, we, we need a motion, either to keep it or do away, and then we discuss.
Okay.
But actually, we've got a, a motion. It's in effect. They take a motion to terminate it. If, uh, otherwise, we just go on like, well, it's already in effect, that's the order of the council.
And Patricia, on the motion, uh, when I say one way or the other, uh, and then discussion after a motion in second, some form or fashion, of course, like Bobby just explained, um, you know, it's in place now, so, um, Bobby, forever, will.
But it's just say in a pla- in place unless the council voted to terminate it. Let me make a motion, if we terminate this soon, and are regularly scheduled council meetings. But if we do not sell that big string TV in case this COVID has to come back and bite us, then we will have all the equipment needed to set up Zoom again.
So we have a motion on the floor. Um, we have a second.
Y'all say.
We have a motion in second. If I understand correctly, they need to terminate, um, unless emergency, basically. Okay, uh, discussion now, we're open for discussion.
Great. So of course I'm going to discuss, cause I'm the only one on Zoom. This seems very targeted. So, the fact there's really absolutely no reason why our city can't keep up with the technology advances that the rest of the world has. We have citywide internet, we've already purchased the equipment needed to record and do Zoom. We have downloaded the Zoom account and we have a trained employee for it. This is very marketable as a city for any future investments. And I think that's something that we should be proud of and brag about instead of going backwards. Park City, Glasgow, and the county have Zoom meetings that they record and post. We have conducted ma- meetings virtually for almost two years. And since we have the equipment necessary and in place, there's no reason not to take it, not to have it any longer. There was an argument on April fifth between you and I, Mayor, that stated that only Beverly, Beverly and I use Zooms, which really isn't enough to cancel. As you know, Beverly and I both travel for work. Instead of being punished for our hard work and our ability to balance both, which I think that we have done well at, we are being punished for that. And to me, there's no other conclusion except for maybe the fact that we're female, or there's some spitefulness. But we're also the only two that use emails, so do you want to cancel that too?
And my, my more response to that's good, this second. For starters, we hadn't, I didn't take that as an argument, we had a discussion.
That's what I said.
No, you said argument.
I'm arguing that fact.
You said you and I had a argument.
Okay, your defense of saying.
We had a discussion.
Yes. Your disagreement with me, your strong disagreement with me, was that Beverly and I are the only ones that use Zoom, which we are, we are the only ones that use Zoom.
Patricia, I will not sit here and get into a thing, but I know what was said, I know we had a discussion. And some of, some of your statements basically are not true.
That's all you say, can, so can, tell me what is true? You, you can say they're not true, but tell me what is true? Why is the reason that you want to cancel Zoom? Because this is something that you spoke with Bobby almost a month ago. And, uh, and was only brought to council when I brought it to your attention on April fifth, the council voted it in, so council would have to vote it out. And now it's on the agenda. This is purely your decision, Mayor.
You put it on the agenda?
Yes.
You're right there.
Yes, thank you for that.
So in a way, you know, you and I have a conversation in March talking about Zoom. I expressed to you at that time that I thought Zoom was still beneficial for us to continue to have. Additionally, the fact that it looks a little discriminatory that two women use Zoom, they work out of town at times, and we have a problem with them occasionally being on Zoom for a meeting. But usually the last fifteen, twenty minutes is over.
Uh huh.
And, and you know, that's just, I just don't think that's wrong. I don't think you guys are writing and even bringing that up just because you're able to be here. It doesn't mean we can't keep that city business just because we're not in this room with you. Because all we do is go over what's in the agenda and go on. Very seldom do we have a discussion on anything. I mean, and on the average, if you go back and look, within twenty to thirty minutes, they're over with. They're done and over with. And we all know that. And you all have the meetings actively, and I go out the door. But they're usually over with. And I think to take the opportunity away that if I have to be sitting in Washington State or in Oregon or wherever, that I can't get on Zoom and conduct business with myself. That's just unreal, that's unheard of in today's world.
It is.
I'm sitting all day long on Microsoft Teams, conducting meetings all over the United States. We're looking at each other, there's other people in the room, and we're conducting business. But you just don't believe we can conduct a once a month council meeting if necessary to own zone. That's just, not just helpful.
Oh, and I understand where you're coming from, Mary. Um, yeah, they're mistaken, I have on that, it's, um, you know, it's all, that's why I told you, um, until COVID, which was necessary, and that's when it was brought to our attention. But up until that point, this was never an issue.
Three months ago, I had COVID and I was not sent a Zoom link twice. Since it's been in ordinance, I have not sent a Zoom link. Those dates being January tenth and March fourteenth. I had COVID three months ago and was very sick and was refused a Zoom link.
You know, may I continue? I will look forward to allowing this to influence. But, you know, we should have equal opportunities to conduct the business. It's not like we're trying to get out of it. And we're here when we can be. And I think I've used Zoom twice and one of the times it didn't work. And I come down here because I had to have a heart procedure done, and my doctor didn't want me around people. So all I heard was we didn't have enough people. So I put on my clothes, I come down here, and we still didn't have enough people. And we're not doing, we're not penalizing anybody else who didn't show up for that meeting.
I can relate to how it felt, believe me.
Well, I know, I mean, you and I discussed it at night, I took them by, I didn't, I didn't want to be here in person. But it didn't keep me from conducting, getting on Zoom. It was, uh, had something to do with something that was going on here, but I still came down here.
I would like to, and, and I say, I had been approached, you know, outside. So, we, we looked back, dinner for nine, and the council voted to, um, begin using this and, um, write down the same fair discussion between, between Patricia, Beverly, and myself. Hey, I don't have a vote. So, if anybody's got any other opinions, we need to hear it.
This little thing is a good thing, that's what. If you get a bad connection, once that connection is gone, the meeting is over.
Like your microphones tonight.
People wasn't here, didn't.
And that, that's another reason.
Yeah, but you're not penalizing that. And the people wasn't here, nobody was here but you, Steve, and myself. Patricia's plane didn't land, and I think Mike had some health issues and Kevin had health issues. They wasn't there and we didn't have a meeting, but nobody's being penalized for that.
I don't think like penalizing anything.
Well, you definitely are.
But, but you know, it's, it's not Patricia's fault that her plane was late, not my fault. But I think I'm going to sit down here and wait thirty minutes for the plane to land or for a good connection to be made on Zoom. Keep dreaming, I'm not going to sit down here and wait thirty minutes while everybody gets everything and, and all their ducks in a row. Because when you run for office, you know you're supposed to be here on one Monday night each month.
Except for when they change it, which has happened for the city attorney's schedule for reasons unknown. There's been numerous ex- uh, absences from Kevin Houchens for health issues, the mayor for heart issues, and the city manager, who is also the code enforcer and the public works director, who is also absent tonight, Robert Smith. We seem to move meetings and cancel meetings and say it's okay for everyone else. No one's asking for anyone to wait thirty minutes for my plane landing, but that is the only meeting I have missed. If I have missed any others, it is because I have been refused a Zoom link. Which brings me new to another question, is those two meetings where I was not sent a link, is anything that was voted on actually viol- uh, uh, valid? Or does it need to be re-voted on according to Act one K R S sixty-one?
Mr. Richardson? Well, I've had this discussion today with the addition, actualization of that question. There wasn't any notification of a Zoom meeting. Therefore, the lack of Zoom participation wouldn't affect the outcome. When we have a Zoom meeting, we're required to notify the public and, and the press. And, uh, that wasn't done. So I, I don't think, in my opinion, that what rose were Zoom meetings because there wasn't a notification.
So you're required to notify the pu- the press, but you didn't. Actually, there was notification for me, if you look back on any of my emails, which I can send to you, I have requested every time after the agenda is sent to me on Thursday to add it to Zoom.
I've answered your question, Mary, some of those questions.
You didn't answer my question, you said under your opinion.
Oh, that's my opinion? And my legal opinions? You want to call the K L C, that's what you do every other time you don't agree with what I say.
And as I should, and I'm entitled to call K L C, that's what they're there for. Are you trying to bully me to not talk to anyone other than you?
No, ma'am, I'm not.
Then what is the point in that statement?
The first, the first place you go to for legal advice for the city is the city attorney. If you rely on what the city attorney says, you are therefore, uh, uh, children for any legal significance if it is wrong. But if you rely on the K L C and they're wrong, they're not, the attorney class privilege doesn't exist, and you're not protected.
Bobby, I call K L C, so I don't feel comfortable asking you questions because you act like you don't want me to say nothing. So I call K L C, who will listen to me and who will talk to me and, you know, try to help me answer the questions. So I guess I'm guilty too, just out of respect.
I, I have never failed to talk to you and do.
As I said, you make me feel uncomfortable and you're, you act like I shouldn't ask any questions.
Well, that's.
And that's my opinion.
Let me just tell you that I am the answer to the question of all the council members that call me. And I, uh, let me tell you publicly that anytime you want to call me, you certainly have the right to. And I will try to answer your questions, so that's the best of my ability. So you can't be concerned about calling me.
Well, I don't bother you. Feels like I should shut up and not say nothing because of your tone, but that's not me.
Um, I'll make one statement. K L C is there, they do a good job. We, uh, in the office, we talk to K L C very, very often. But I will say this, I have never talked to K L C attorneys that they didn't end with check with your city attorney.
I've talked with many times and they didn't give me checks.
Uh, same here.
I do not say that.
So I.
Well, I'm not saying, they probably do check for that because he directly deals with, you know, any issues that come over you.
Well, we're, we are in some form, in some way, we're totally off the beat. I will say this, and I think I made this statement back when we sat all in about our TV and everything. And I, and I will stick with this, in our society today, I mean, as all of you know, I am technology illiterate. Of course, buttons I have been, and that's how we, the, of us, you know, like, professionally, that. In our society today, it's very important and it is useful. With that said, uh, I think it's very important from time to time, um, that we, that we could use, especially during COVID, during certain situations. So I'm just going to leave it at that, and I still haven't heard from very many council people. Well, I think.
I just want to add one more thing, and we talked about, we had been emailing and Bobby. I just wanna add one more thing, and we talked about, we had been emailing, and Bobby, you and I had talked about it, for KRS, but I want the rest of the public to know, for KRS six eighteen, that, uh, point two six, which is going to be strengthened by House Bill four fifty-three, that was put in place a number of years ago to offer the option to video conferencing, and the, and that was way before COVID. It is a way for your city to be involved, for your council members to be involved, for people that have special conditions, or needs, or has jobs, that's a way. So, the fact that our city doesn't seem to want to work with these options, including televising meetings, or allowing public to speak in our current processes, doesn't seem right to the citizens of our community, and we need to start thinking and voting for what's best for the people. There's absolutely no reason to not have technology, just because you may not be technology, like, literate, or someone has a flip phone, or someone doesn't wanna be bothered with it, the rest of the community wants it.
Did I not just say I realize the importance of technology?
I'm not speaking to you, I'm speaking to the council. Sorry.
One, one thing you mentioned there, Patricia, about the public couldn't speak. All they have to do is call to request to be on the hearing. And that's another thing, and here I'm, I've often been, been working on a process, a better process, if, if a, a citizen would like to speak, uh, we have to come up with a better process. And I'm working on that, but we, I don't know of anyone that we have ever denied that I could have called, I would say, absolutely, but, so.
I think Karen Beer's.
To discontinue Zoom meetings, except in emergencies.
I know I'm not allowed to talk, but I just want one question. I'd like the ones that don't want to say anything to explain why.
I'll tell you, I don't care much about that, because when you vote on Beer, Beer.
Can I talk?
I don't care if you vote, no, that's why.
Now, as much as y'all know, that's the council's family, but.
Don't worry about it, you guys have to go.
I think that Zoom is a great tool. I agree, if you are elected, and there's any way you can be here, that would be, you're expected to be here. But on the same token, so many of our, the poorly worked force now has to do Zoom meetings, has to be somewhere else, they have meetings all over, like official has to go outside. So, basically, if you do not do Zoom meetings, the only people that wanna be allowed to be on the city council are either retired people, unemployed people. You cannot, you're totally cutting out people like that work out of town. I have been living in Cape City for the past forty-some years, just till I bought Redwood, had I been in Cape City. I've been to that period, I'm going to run for city council with our guarantee, we don't want to, but.
Yes, we do.
I have not, I could not have been here at five o'clock on a Monday. If you do not allow Zoom meetings when necessary, not when just because you don't wanna put your clothes on and come into the meeting. But this is, we're getting, we have to get away from, okay, all the meeting people are retired and pardon me, male. We want to go with the flow, and Zoom meetings are a very, very, very helpful thing, as long as it works. But if you do not, if you cancel this Zoom meeting, and you do not let this go through, you're basically saying we're gonna have to be a retired deployed, or retired person to be on the council meeting, because workforce is totally different than when we were twenty and thirty.
No, Angela, still, I've been here a long time, I've been with, I've been here a long time.
Yes.
I've worked with a lot of people that didn't, that had dogs, that had dogs. Always, most of the people always fell and take off one hour early a month, meet you. We didn't have any, nobody heard of them, you know, we don't have family. But everybody was here most of the time, but not because of work, and they wasn't here, unless it was a worship. But most of the time, most of the people had jobs, and everybody could pick off an hour, an hour early, just to be here one day a month. You think so?
No, if I've been.
I'm not asking you, I'm just saying, people that were here, that elected were here, be here one day a month.
Well, I disagree with you.
You what?
I disagree with you. And now that you, you cannot, you're.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you cannot be here, you select, you might not be able to be here, but if you don't get to be here, don't run. I mean, if you're not gonna be here, don't run, you can be here one day a month, one day a month.
Don't run.
Don't run.
You were absent, you were gonna be absent at the last meeting, Mike, and the mayor had to call you.
I don't care.
You know, I don't run at a job forty hours a week, from my home, in front of a computer and a phone, making seventy thousand dollars a year, and I don't have to be in person to be effective and to be in a meeting.
Are they here?
Uh, yes, we are, if you follow.
Okay, uh. That's it, Angela, for that, I think that, that I'm gonna pick on you. You know, one thing, it also makes the fact that it would be retired people. Now, all I wanna say on that is, to my knowledge, we only have three ladies who have actually run. First of all, ladies have got to run, if you're gonna have ladies.
Well, I agree.
I mean, uh, uh, Beverly, Patricia, Carol Holt. That's the only three that I recall that's even ranked. But I just wanna point out, you need to run.
No, you totally agree.
No, that's.
I want you to run, you need to have a taste of being a, being elected.
I want you to run, I do too. I do, I'll go for it, I'll go for it.
Think it's fun, you better, we need to run.
Yeah.
I know it's so.
And I didn't mean that, but I just wanted to point out all the ladies are, you know, and there have been very few.
And this Zoom does work.
But I don't, I don't think you're trying to read, and it's actually ranked.
This Zoom.
Okay, we're, we're kind of, we're.
But this Zoom works good when it works. I went to school down here on that big screen TV last year numerous times with Kentucky League of City, when it works, but when the connection is gone. Let's say we had going to closed session. Could you be here for closed session, we're gonna talk about real estate?
We've done closed session with Zoom. Everyone steps out.
Uh, sorry, I have one question. And I'm guilty, I've got an awful crack myself. I mean, legal aspect. Where do we stand, uh, on discontinuing?
The statute said you may, that doesn't mean, so you either may or may not. That statute that Patricia cited, KRS eight six one one eight two six, says a public agency may in the, in the, in the, uh. It was up to, it was up to the council.
Any other discussion? I had to email through that, and I thought, oh. I was gonna do, well, it's not in the motion. What's the next thing, you know, the phone, are we gonna add it to the motion or what?
I'm a man, Patricia's stupid, but y'all probably wanna get a little bit.
Oh, Lord. To me, to me, that's the need be.
But we're the only two.
I know it. The way the motion's stated right now, the answer to your question would be nothing. Any other ideas, discussion? I wrote all those.
There's a goal, I love to keep them.
Definitely, no, no. You can break down this thing.
I'm gonna try.
Any dollar?
No, but yes.
Anything happen?
Yes, but yes is.
A yes is, the way, the way the motion's stated, a yes has to go away, and now it's. Yeah.
Are you happy? It is fine.
No. Does that mean the mayor's a tie breaker?
No, he abstained.
Okay.
He don't have a tie, he abstained.
So, that's it. We honor the rules, uh, and then stitching it is counted with the majority. Kevin voting. But anyway, three to two with a forum president, it was a promotion, Gary.
If I had calculated right, when we had four, yes and two no.
Oh, you had three yeses.
Three yeses and one taken.
Yes.
The whole mail voted to really like, we can have to think about that.
Right, uh.
But you can't, I don't know, but you can't say. Yes, but.
Um, okay. The next item, and, uh, line, uh, Orange Line Service Proposal. We have been, we have been looking, and as all of you know, uh, we have, uh, we have been short of help in our, uh, Public Works Department. Uh, we, and our one they started today. Um, so, the, uh, Senatorate Commission put out a bid for the mowing for the cemetery. And the young man who was awarded that also has owned a business, and this is a control for. Uh, and, and we were discussing, uh, like the convention center, the ballpark, the, um, possibly CEA, uh, and he gave us prices that have been the package. Uh, and there's no way you can concretely do estimates on mowing because of weather and different factors affecting. But the prices he gave me, that you haven't considered as yet. Uh, we figured like four mowings per month, except for the ballpark, which normally they don't mow a couple pounds a month. You have those prices, and on a, for nine months, um, over a hundred fifteen thousand two hundred ten dollars. Now, that's sixteen hundred ninety dollars a month. And, you know, one reason this moved to this is because of our lack of, like, formula, and hard to find the belt and so forth, our maintenance, and this will be leading quite a bit of our mowing. With that said, uh, these are very reasonable prices, I think, but I just wanted to present that to you, get your thoughts, uh, ideas. Uh, now, this is also, let me point out, he furnishes the mowers, the equipment, the weeders, the mule, the whole bit, for that amount. And I just wanted to present it to you. We made no decisions, everyone draw the, you know, their inputs, see what's a thought. Overall, I know Jennifer and I have figured, I think it would actually save us a little money, and to be honest, I'll have to get those figures in more detail, obviously. But, uh, just wanted to present it to you and get your thoughts. Oh, oh, I don't know, reason I was referring, the young man did a fantastic job, he finished up mowing, and that's who, uh, that the Senatorate Commission awarded, that mowing bid too, I was just making a comparison.
Before, uh, before we took it over?
Uh, well, he finished up the last month or so, and did a fantastic job. Matter of fact, I heard a lot of compliments on, you know, they had some problems with the mowing, they posted something, but he, uh, he did a good job. He was not over the, the cheaper of the bids that the Senatorate Commission got, so they awarded him. I was just making that comparison.
Okay, so that is.
He does, he does.
He already has the.
Yes, right, so, and I was actually making a, a reference. So, this is just something, and I beg, but another major thing is just because of our lack of help. Only for our Public Works, but that is, again, uh, with them, uh, mowing for CEA. Okay, glad you pointed that out, 'cause I forgot. We have talked to David at CEA, and, uh, of course, uh, in, in, so they were, uh, looking at some of their. So, we talked to them about trading, mowing their lot for them furnishing us porta potties at no charge for all of our different events. We figured that up just last year alone, which, uh, close to about nineteen hundred dollars, two thousand, something along that way, that we paid for porta potties. So, we've been talking, and that's not to stop either, we have been talking to David about maybe doing a swap off there. We'll, we'll, you know, uh, then there's daycare and all that, and, uh, all that's legal.
Well, if the council, if the council authorized it, it's less than the pit amount.
Yeah, but, uh, I have worked on that, and that's where the CEA comes in, see. So, I don't know, it's eighteen, nineteen hundred, it, it's sort of a wash, rest of the mow that, uh, at sixty dollars a mowing, versus, of course, we have the porta potty out at the ballpark, that's eighty dollars a month. And then, of course, and we're going to do it, uh, we provided the porta potties for all the events, bars and coffee, and other events we had, and that type of thing. So, it's, it's sort of, it's pretty much a wash, and twenty dollars is all I think, uh, the best we figured out. So, thoughts? And like I say, another major factor is just our lack of help. Yep.
So. I'd recommend that if the council wants to do this, that we, a motion that would authorize it, so, I won't miss it, yeah.
My say, whatever.
But you should just let us know about it, you still looking for a little more, what they're operating, if you like, great.
Well, I mean, everybody's very much agreed, yes, you all agree, but that's still up to y'all, we can wait on it, or we can, we can go ahead and, and do that, or if, if, or look at it, or.
My thing is the CEA, we're, we don't, we don't have a commitment from them, as a member, and they may want more mowings than that, or what have. Change the whole thing.
And I can find that, I can find that out. Well, I figured like, normally, four mowings a month, that's once a week, sometimes, maybe.
All they mow is around their pump station, stuff that.
Oh, this is not pump stations, this is their lot, we ain't mowing their pump station.
Okay, all they have mows is the lot.
Yeah, on, on, where they're.
They lose a lot of money to pay this bill.
What?
They lose a lot of money to pay this bill.
They, uh.
And then see, CEA, you said we get nineteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
They lose a lot of money from two forty to nineteen hundred.
Well, that, that's for the year. I'm just saying, last year, our porta potties for, uh, events, the one that got out of the ballpark, was ni- nineteen hundred, give or take, for y'all's.
That's total.
For the year.
This is contract, this is for you, it's not a month to month, is it a month?
Y'all leave that, uh.
Total right here, fifteen thousand two hundred.
That's for a year, for all, all, all of this. But I just combined them as a lump sum, and like I say, if y'all think about it, look at it, some more, I mean. But I just combined them as a lump sum, and like I say, if y'all think about it, look at it some more, I mean, that's science, too.
To me, these seem like pretty reasonable prices, when you consider that they're paying their own social security. And the power is going to match his employee's social security, he's going to have to carry work with his comp on his employees. That way, the city doesn't have to pay the social security or work with his comp. Seems like a pretty good deal for the city, to me it does.
Well, when you count our city, our city and our, and our mowers and our fuel, and, you know, but, again, y'all would like to consider, you know, I like that city, right? Although, although, excuse me. Uh, well, I make the most of it, y'all, but shit, it's a same. Uh.
They put people on payroll and come at that fee.
So we have a motion on the floor to accept this, uh, uh, and, and let, let me emphasize, uh, the way it gets set. Okay, we have a motion second, we definitely have Bobby drop, uh, uh, her decision. Decided to go that, that way. Yes, right. Any further discussion?
I would like to get contact from them.
Where is this exactly, what fund is, what fund is this exactly coming out of to pay for this?
What fund is this coming out of?
Is it the general fund?
Uh, yeah, general fund.
Yeah, and that would be.
Actually, let me back up, it would vary, just like the ballpark would come out of Parks Direct, so it would vary somewhat, sorry about that. Uh, I was about to back up there.
So this.
It come out of Parks Direct, uh.
So this would be in lieu of hiring another city employee, or kind of just filling the void of having trouble finding another public works guy?
Yeah, and, you know, that, uh, no longer than, under our, under our employment situation right now, it would, uh, really help us, and, you know, and, and it'd be a year to year decision, uh, uh.
Wonderful, it won't be a big, all that's what we got.
I can give you, uh, just a small example, because past couple of years, I've actually mowed the ballpark quite a bit myself, and pushed it, and I mean pushing it, the best I've, uh, done time-wise in five and a half hours, and that's no weed. So.
So each one of these, come out of a different plan, so we're staying.
Well, I'm not saying every one of them would, but definitely the, uh, ballpark, since it's, uh, that would definitely come out of Parks Direct.
So it seems like we need to make those decisions on exactly where budget-wise this would, because we'd kind of need to know that, what's coming out of what budget, to make an appropriate decision.
Yeah.
Um, and also, I think it'd be kind of wise to see if this, which honestly is cheaper than an employee, but is it better to do what, something that we've talked about for a while, is offer better raises and incentives for public works guys, because I think that we all agree, I think it's something that's been needed, and this money being utilized better towards our current city employees.
Letitia, uh, on my notes at the end.
Yeah.
I, I, I have some comments about, uh, that very thing about our, our improvement, our, uh, Public Works and that, and if you hold on just a minute, and final recovery, that here a little bit later than, uh, pointed out, if that's okay.
Okay.
So, we actually have a motion on the floor to accept this, and once again, if you feel like, uh, we need a few more details, or whatever, or like Beverly said, maybe a contract, and actually vote on the contract, and that will have down to the giddy gritty. Hey, it's not that idea either. Uh, so what, 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 are we going to vote on it in the giddy gritty, or what are we going to vote on here, or what? Uh, we have a motion on the floor to accept, uh, the, as far as what we have in front of this place. Uh, Beverly made, and, and it's probably not a bad idea, you can go to see the actual contract, and, and, and we can, uh, I'll get with Jennifer. Uh, I do know the Parks Direct, uh, most of those, uh, I'm thinking of coming out of their own fund. Uh, but we can find out all of those particulars, if, if you'd like to wait. Uh, I, I, I'm, uh, Letitia, I'm gonna go ahead and, and just, at the end, we things that we're not totally prepared tonight, I'm gonna recommend a call meeting, uh, but just to let y'all know that, so we could have it in a week, ten days. No, not just this, the three items, the smutty moment, uh, if we did, and get everything put down. That's sort of what I was referring to on the, uh, ARPA and those, uh, wages and those type of things earlier, Letitia. Uh, I'd love to recommend maybe, but, so, if you feel better with the actual contract, that's fine too, but we do have a motion on the floor that we need to either retract or vote on.
I vote to retract it, to wait.
Yeah, that would, that would actually be up to D E.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me, Steve. I didn't mean to, I'm going to, we're going, those things on that page, I'm not going to retract. You want to load it down, that's fine. But I think that. Which also, which also, it's going to be a big big problem, I guess, right, uh, as someone that. Yeah.
Can, can he amend his motion? He can amend, he can amend it.
What's the amendment?
To see the contract. To receive the contract and, uh, put in cancellation clause.
I know that. So if I'm understanding, the amendment is to, when we see the contracts, that's, I can.
Finish.
Once we have a signed contract, we don't have to affect, is it mowing say? Well, that's, that's a good point. So, we have a, a, a amendment, but we have a second to the amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and second, in discussion on the amendment. If not, on the favor, say aye.
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 Aye, okay, so, uh, okay, now, the motion with the amendment was to accept these figures. Which kind of, and have a written contract with all of it.
Cancellation clause, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Any further discussion? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Most of the masses. Uh, Cemetery Advisory Committee, Bobby, do we, uh, we need to approve the actual, uh, document itself, as well as the afforn fees?
Well, I, I think it would be a good idea.
Okay, uh, could you, uh?
Yes, I, the mayor called me and said that several people wanted to give money to the, uh, fund, the endowment for, for the cemetery. And we had no procedure, or no, uh, organization or entity set up to do that. So I have prepared this declaration of trust, that the city would create a trust for, who accept funds from individuals, state, private and government entities, and any other legitimate source, those funds would be, uh, uh, invested, and nobody could get any compensation other than, uh, for acting for the trust fund, and the, the trust fund, funds could only be distributed to the Cemetery Commission, and, uh, uh, in three people, uh, adult members who have an interest in the maintenance of cemetery, to advise the trustee about the investment of trust funds and the necessary expenditure of the trust fund to cemetery. Three people, staggered hallways, where all the subjects are troubled again.
Can you do that on, on the issue?
Ah, yes, yes.
Okay, the three outstanding citizens, I feel like are, are really reputable folks, that I asked them, they accepted, Carl Davis Junior, um, Sam Carey, and Dr. Sherman Bullock. And they graciously, uh, accepted that with, uh, council approval. So I would entertain a motion to approve this declaration of trust and those three, uh, advisors, advisory position on, on the trust fund.
Make that motion.
Second, that, excuse me, Letitia, was that a motion, or do you have a comment?
Yes, ma- make that motion, I do have a comment, but I make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and second, uh, Letitia.
Um, I just, um, since we're on the topic of cemetery, I just had a quick question, have we received all of the money and the paperwork from the old cemetery board?
I'm glad you asked. Uh, and let me start by saying, the Cemetery Commission that we're upon, and they have worked diligently, and they've filed everything in order. And to your specific question, uh, we have received a working balance fund, uh, is she, something wrong with her?
Oh, yeah.
We have about ninety percent of the working budget. Now, her thing was, she had some bills from back before we took over and all that. Thankfully, uh, Bobby has been working on the transfer of the, uh, uh, perpetual fund, and we have, he brought that check with him tonight. So, uh, we're ninety-five percent, and what would you say, Bobby, is he might have a couple thousand dollars or something like that? By the end of this week, hopefully, everything will be, uh, totally, uh, transferred. Uh, if that answers your question.
So like perpetual fund was what we were expected, over a hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, no.
Why?
Actually, we got a check for, uh, ninety thousand, it's a lot of cents.
Why would the perpetual fund be different than what we were told, since it's a perpetual fund?
Uh, that, I'm not really sure, but we will, I know, I know Bobby had, I would agree with Bobby, and Bobby had listened once about that, so.
I, I, I think that it went down because of the investments, if it resulted in stock market, or that, I assume that's what, what it was, I never knew what the exact figure was anymore.
And I think that's, yeah, you know, the official, which is probably, I don't know, whatever, you know, initially, we got the ballpark figure of a hundred thousand. Well, and, I'm also hoping that the banker that probably, they must have had it in a money marketer, or something, that actually declined, and I'm really not sure.
Yeah, I think, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I will say this, that our, uh, our, uh, trust fund advisors, our declaration of trust, and our Cemetery Commission will be meeting next week. Hopefully, uh, especially in Cemetery Commission work, we can finalize, or we'll pay you, uh, you'll see some new signs, they've been working diligently. Our plans are, once we, uh, we're waiting to get both lined up, to have a public meeting to inform the, the people, you know, just, I know, it's front of the interest, interest initially, and it's just taking some time, but, uh, back to your original question, I'd say we have ninety-eight percent of the money.
Okay.
All the paperwork, we got all the paperwork for that period.
Uh, yeah.
What's necessary, yeah, yeah, but we don't have all the paperwork, you know, she's got a lot of secrets, so, she's always, uh, it's not even pertinent for the running, but it's pretty good.
And here goes to Bonita, along with the Cemetery Commission, Bonita had worked, uh, privately, uh, thank you, just transpired as, uh, generally as possible, and, uh, especially with getting, uh, information, like you said, there's some old record, I think, I think, I feel for, uh, um, but. Okay, uh, Bobby, do you have anything other than what's in your, I have. I'm here, gee, okay, that's what I had, so.
Did we need to vote that board in? Because I think we, did we all vote?
Excuse me, I thought.
We got, we got very motion, we got discussion.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
I'm glad you said discussion, I don't know.
All in favor of, uh, the, uh, advisory going to our trust fund, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, too.
Thank you, uh.
Everybody vote.
Yes.
Letitia make motion?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Police Department, Chief, you got anything other than what's in?
Just, uh, we got a new police sergeant today, got sworn in today, officer, pleasure, uh, assigned, a week ago, and, uh, Raffi Althakosis, he's, he's, uh, actually retired from Wisconsin Tech University, he's, he's also there for a couple years, and, uh, I've known him thirty years, probably a four-year, I'm a police officer. But he's, he got sworn in today, and he's, he's not wearing his license.
You don't have to wear your.
I think you have it, I don't, it's all your part. It used to be that sworn in, uh, red light, that could be, that could be.
I have a question for the Police Department.
Yes.
Um, there was an arrest made recently for robbery that happened on thirty-one, um, April second, two gentlemen, Ricky Edwards and Thomas Tabor. Where did they reside, where did they come from? Because I was told it was the Cape Land Motel, which is the new halfway house, and since the Cape City Police Department's involved, I would love to know that. I didn't see it in the report.
Um, so maybe the city was the halfway house, and it was actually a theft, but a robbery, it's definitely a motor vehicle.
It was after, I'm sorry, it was actually a theft?
It's a theft, yes, it's theft of a motor vehicle, and they were in the, in the Cape House, yeah, where he thinks it was, one of them, one of them, that's true.
Okay, thank you. And then I just wanted to know too, how do we advertise for positions that are available within the city, but also for Police Department?
Uh, but we're always taking applications, we do, or it's part of the boys, we're always, you might come in today, we want to put an application, and, uh, we, we do look, so, we got, I did look for search side officer, but, I mean, it's hard to get to focus, and because somebody's already been captured, somebody here. He was like, Rob, yeah, he's search side officer, he, he's retired, two years, he's still, still young, I guess he might have got more years to go with. And, and, actually, I, I saw him now one day, and told him why, so he did, and then he had to open him, and they said, well, he got a lot of.
No, I think that's great, sorry, let me clarify, I was just curious if there was like, do we put it out there anywhere, so that people?
No, we have in the past, but anymore, we just take applications, those kinds.
Okay.
Bobby has, we, our place, the page, whatever, and we're hoping something from them, but we're open all the time for, for application.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Um, purpose not here, uh, have any questions on anything, in your packet, uh, okay, for later. Yeah.
I like that.
Um, there, so, okay, um, any committee report?
No.
Uh, a couple things I want to mention, um.
I don't know about the rest of the, rest of me, I don't have, I don't have anything to talk, my community, I don't know that yet.
Right.
No, I spoke to Bobby though, earlier today about, and you had also said, Mayor, on April fifth, that we can make a motion to televise the meetings, that council could vote on that. Can we make a motion for that?
Uh, Letitia, excuse me, actually, I meant to include that on our reserve discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, it has been, it has been, uh, brought to my attention, and at one time, uh, I don't think the word currently, and then we started, uh, televising, and then it's been a while, I don't know the exact date, but. And then it's been a while, I don't know the exact date, but, uh, you know, I apologize, I meant to cut this with our Zoom discussion. Uh, and it's fine with me either way, uh, whatever you all decide on, uh, televising our meetings. You know, one thing about our meetings, with the setup, they are not live, they are delayed broadcast, so everybody understands that.
That's great, since five o'clock seems to be hard for people, but some people know it.
Yeah, uh, so, um. On resuming our, uh, television, uh, broadcast, uh, and we have to, hey, well, if, if it's decided to do, you know, we'll get on it. Uh, we can be doing it the next month or so, we'll see what we have to do, but if you are going out, they are not live, they are delayed broadcast.
Oh, yeah, that's the TV channel.
Yes, Channel Six, I think it is.
Yeah.
So. Uh, not discussion, so are you putting, uh, are you putting that in a motion, or somebody have a motion to, I guess, to resume that, since we're not doing that, be a motion to resume, like Bobby?
I'll make a motion that will be somewhere, but. Or me?
I mean, the kitchen's already made.
Did you make, was that a motion?
Yes, I said I'd like to make a motion to put it in.
I made your motion.
And so it's a second, all right.
Okay, I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion and second to resume our, uh, uh, TV, uh, service, so speak, for our, uh, votes. And, uh, any further, any discussion? Folks, uh, and I, I'm gonna say this, I mean, no harm, I, I know we got opinions, but that's up to y'all, okay? Um, so, anybody has any further comments, or whatever? Do you just have a roll call vote?
Their report?
Yes, we do.
Anything else?
Yes. Nice, thanks.
Kevin Hatches?
Yeah.
Michael Hatches, you, what's your plan?
Yes.
Okay, um, motion passes, we will, uh, get to work on the, uh, I'm sure we still got, they're waiting and so forth. But we'll get to work with that and see just what the, and, and first thing we have to do is, just talk to the telephone company, station, and all of that. We will definitely get to work on that. Okay, um, the, uh, please remember, and this is a formality, and I know, but if you have about six o'clock next Monday night, somebody can sign the name on this public meeting. It, it is very important to show that, uh, we do have residents who are interested, and getting that building up and going, our boys, girls, so try to remember that place. Also, a shout-out, Cars and Coffee was a great, great, great huge success in April. Uh, close to three hundred fifty show cars, probably, uh, what would y'all list, make three or fifteen hundred people, probably. I don't know its estimates, but I would say. Um. Also, last Saturday, we had the, uh, Easter egg hunt, and the nice cold weather, but it was, it was great. And a big shout-out to, uh, the Chamber and Los Regotten Treasurers for helping us, uh, do that. Now, one thing I will turn back. Uh, our ARCA funds, uh, I have made some proposals, not plans, for some uses. You all may have some, I think we need a call meeting to address some of those. Uh, also, we are working, uh, possibly, we may have it, with some annexation. Um, and also, this contract that we just said that we, we had in hand. So with that said, I would like for us, if at all possible, while we're all here together, to schedule a call meeting within, within the next ten days, or whatever would work for it. Uh, those are some pretty major things, we just didn't have all the info and information for tonight. If at all possible, I would like to, if anything, while we're all here, Bobby, uh, I'm sure, but, but.
I'd rather be a level, level, you know?
Okay, um. We have, and if we can get, uh, sure, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna say we have, so. Excuse me.
You want the council to.
No, I just thought, uh, either, which would be, what, eighteenth, or a Halloween, Monday, maybe? If either one of those dates worked for you, it's, of course, you know, oh, or whatever. Uh, yeah. But I saw why when we were here, we might, if we could, versus, uh, this calling, and that, like, right? Once the, I know next Monday, say, eighteen, across the college. Would that, would that work for officials?
Only way I can change is if I'm, when it's still on, I mean, I'm, if I'm, other than that, I'm not a, I'm not, I mean. Next Monday night, eighteen, like, certainly.
Yeah.
But I think.
I'm gonna give, uh, just twenty-four hours, you know, that's pretty, huh? Yeah, you only, you only gotta give it twenty-four, and, uh.
Okay.
Letitia.
Yes.
Next, next Monday worked for you?
Is that eighteenth?
Yes.
Yes.
So whatever, now, we may not have that annexation, but we still got some things, I think, that, that, that we need, but, especially in our ARCA, and some of those. All right, Dennis, our next one to work, we'll plan it at five, that, uh. Yeah, that other meeting is at six, yes. Okay, next Monday, and we'll get it publicized, um, go ahead, wash your hands, um.
I need, uh, that's pretty.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Letitia.
Yes.
Uh, on the mowing thing, if, are you gonna have the, uh, finance committee get together, so we can kind of figure out stuff?
Yeah, let's just clean that right now, if you want, um. Would you, I mean, could we do? Um, the week of the eighteenth, is there a date in there that works best for you and Denny?
There was no voting on that, I think, but this is, or, or, there, to the end.
Are we voting on the eighteen, oh, is the eighteenth the special call for the, the, the?
Yeah, if all that contract's done.
Okay.
We have, we have, we haven't had a, a meeting with you at all, out of place on finance.
Yeah, I have Easter coming up, but I wanna go and see.
We need to figure out, we need to figure out what, where we stand and what we need to do.
You're right about that. I can do it by Zoom, if you can.
I'm sorry, I don't, I guess.
Um, but if not, it's definitely an email-worthy thing, because in our budget, I'd have to get budgets from Jennifer and the mayor. I get delayed sometimes when I ask for budget stuff through, uh, the clerk, but, I mean.
Well, when you get, can you just call them, Denny?
Yeah, absolutely, and I think that it's, yes, definitely, and we'll talk about it, but I think.
We'll just call City Hall, and tell them if you get a hold of them.
Okay. It will do.
Okay, we have, very much to the term. Second, on favor, say aye. Thank you all.